Told him we missed him.
Yeah.
I didn't even realize it was him.
I bet we acted snooty.
I bet I did too.
I know I did, so I didn't know who it was.
Could have been two teenagers necking in there.
Well, I kinda thought what I thought it was.
That's PDA.
Sparking.
PDA.
Yeah. Don't need any of that.
Hi guys, it's five, we'll wait just a second. I would like to call to order this called board meeting this Thursday, May the 7th, for the purpose of offering one of our four candidates the position of Warren County Director of Schools. Please keep in mind that this offering is exactly that. The chosen candidate would then accept based on successful contract negotiations. It was previously discussed that our board would vote by ballot voting. Due to record-keeping guidelines for these ballots, I would ask that we make an amendment to the previous motion in a previous meeting. That we keep the ballot voting to three rounds. And if upon three rounds, we've not chosen a candidate, that we would do the fourth round and thereafter by roll call vote. Could I have a motion on that?
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. I, I do, I would like to say something. I'd like to thank all of my fellow board members, the candidates, Dina Jones, Robin Phillips, and our community, and all Warren County School System employees during this candidate search. Your thoughts, your prayers, and concerns were heard. Thank you so much.
Madam Chairperson, if I could jump in, I, I want to join you in thanking all of our friends and neighbors and fellow citizens in Warren County. I'm sure that you've had lots of phone calls, text messages, emails. I, I certainly have, and I appreciate every one of them. This is, this is not a decision for this school board alone, but for the whole community, because it affects the whole community. It affects us not just in the here and now, but in the future. So, I, I just want to let everybody know, I appreciate your input, I appreciate your candor and honesty. And I, I will say that while I'm grateful for that input, I, I am embarrassed that I haven't been able to get back to respond individually
Right.
to every email and every text message. But nevertheless, I do appreciate that input. And I, I hope that there is no school system employee, teacher, government employee who feels reluctant to talk to school board members, county commissioners, city council people. You know, just because they got a paycheck from a government agency, that doesn't cancel or mitigate their First Amendment rights. They are still citizens. And, you know, I, I for one, I, I feel like the rest of you would agree with me, we encourage their input. And never, never be afraid to talk to your elected representatives. Never fear to do that.
Well said.
Amen.
Amen to that, I agree with that.
Well said.
Thank you, Mr. Bill.
Thank you. I'd like to clarify, the board will attempt to select a director by unanimous vote. A two-thirds vote of the membership of the full board shall be required for appointment. For tonight, that means that we must have a vote of four or five for one candidate. And I would like, before we do our first ballot voting, I would like to open the floor to any comments, any suggestions, anything you'd like to say before we do our first round. If not, we'll go straight to ballot voting.
It should be noted, just for the viewers on WCS TV, and I guess later on YouTube, that this is a vote of record. Our name will be on these ballots, so these will be a public record, and anyone, any citizen is, is free to look at these.
You will have to also say it.
Yeah, you, you do have to put your individual name.
And you have to do it verbally as well.
Okay.
I mean, it will have to be read aloud.
Yes. Dina will collect those. Are we gonna just do it individually?
You can, she can read them aloud if they have to be read aloud.
Okay. Okay.
And, and one other thing, the reason that we're following this procedure is just out of concern that each board member cast her or his vote based on her or his analysis and information, and his or her own calculation that that person will be the best fit for Warren County. We don't want to influence other people at this point. In other words, if, if I started off voting, or if you went by roll call, I guess that would be the last one, but so that one board member's vote does not influence another board member. Trying to keep it independent and pristine.
That is right.
So I've got my first ballot.
Okay.
Thank you, Dina.
Kinda feels like a secret society, doesn't it?
Well, it does.
Except we're on live TV.
This is the way they used to elect the Pope. Now, I don't know whether they still do it, but the Cardinals and the Curia, they, they would all be assembled on the day of vote, and they had a big silver chalice in the middle of the room with all the pomp and circumstances, and each Cardinal would go up and put in his paper ballot. And he would say a little prayer, it was a little formula, pray that the Holy Ghost would guide him in selecting the best pontiff. Even, even in times when pontificates were sold to the highest bidder. But they would always pray. So, maybe this is, this is sort of like a pontifical election.
This is that, when I trust that we all have been praying.
There we go.
Yeah, that's right.
Madam Chairman, I would just say, I mean, I think it probably needs to be, Dina, are you going to read the candidate's name and the board member's name?
Yes.
Then you probably just need to affirm that that is your vote.
Okay. All right.
Okay, Tanya Bass has voted for Grant Swallows.
Yes.
Sue Anderson has voted for Autumn Turner.
Yes.
Teddy Jones has voted for Autumn Turner.
Yes.
Helen Martin has voted for Grant Swallows.
Yes.
Bill Zegman has voted for Grant Swallows.
Yes.
Okay, that is a vote three to two. That is not enough, so we'll have to go to round two ballot voting. But I would open the floor for discussion.
Madam Chairman, I would like to address the fact why I voted for Autumn. I was very impressed with what she had to say Saturday in her interview. I thought she'd done a good job representing what she believed in. I think she's devoted in the school and what she wants to do for the school. I feel like she's gonna be here with the school. I think she understands the budget. I like the ideal of her being able to make everything public. If we had a child that wasn't acknowledged because maybe they were in the band or something and didn't get recognition, if they'd done really good in something else, they would be acknowledged. She was gonna work with the media, make sure everything was brought forward to the media, and just highlight her school and everything we do. She has some good goals ahead. She's done really good about getting the reading program in the school, has worked hard. She was a mentor of Bobby. I think she's learned a lot. She understands the budget, she can talk to people, she's very well-known in the community. I had numerous, and I talked to lots of people, schools, principals, teachers, even people from other communities, and they all acknowledged Autumn, was very proud of the way she represented Warren County. So, I would definitely be in favor of Autumn Turner.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay, Madam Chairman, I'd like to say the reason I chose Grant Swallows is, is leadership qualities, and on a first note, all the applicants were good, and this was a very hard decision for me to make. But on that note, Grant's leadership qualities, he's a team player, he doesn't micromanage, seemed to be a real effective communicator, he even said he had studied journalism. I liked, he said, you have to trust him and about his integrity or his beliefs, and he quoted cultural Trump's strategy. Thank you.
Yes, he did, thank you. Anyone else?
This, a lot of people told me, said Ted, this is, this is gonna be a hard decision, and, and it has been, and I've went back and forth so many times, until I started coming to the conclusion, one person mentioned to me last night, said, well, who, who is the most qualified to take the job? And that swayed me towards Autumn, and thinking about what we have to face, that we don't know what we're gonna face come, come August, when school starts, we don't know what we're gonna face next year, when we have to go and defend our budget to the county court. And I felt like someone that had a firm grasp on all of that right away would, would be the best fit for us. It, it was, I, I heard good things, probably like y'all, after every interview, I said, that's the one. And after almost every conversation I had with folks, they were, okay, I agree with you, I'll, you know, I think I'm voting that way, and then I talk to somebody else, no, well, no, you got a good point, but to, to me, it did come down to that of the understanding of, of someone that had everything in place already, and, and would be able to speak thoroughly to the county commissioners when it, when it came to items that may come up. And that's one thing that some of the county commissioners mentioned, you know. They all bitching, Bobby's shoes are hard to fill, you know. There, there's been a lot of praise for Bobby Cox through this whole process.
Yes.
And the fact that we're spoiled with a, with a really good director that knows the system. And I guess, in, in a way, it came down to, you know, for me right now, is, man, if we could just have Bobby for another, you know, ten years. And, and I don't think Autumn is a clone of Bobby, but I think she fits that bill of someone that is, has a firm grasp on all the numbers and is able to express those to, to everyone, and is able to hit the ground running. And I, I think, just like all of them, will come with new ideas, with a new perspective, and, and continue to progress forward. We talk a lot about change, and, and, you know, it's, it's exciting to think about that we can go a different direction or go further than we have been, which is great. But we've always said that we feel like we've got one of the best districts in the state because of our director, and, and I, I wanted someone that fit that mold.
Very good, thank you, Teddy.
Madam Chairperson and esteemed board members, we were blessed to have four finalists in this competition, and we started with ten, I believe. And it, it's a blessing to have four people who are so, who are so highly qualified. But at the same time, that kinda complicates things, because the, the, the difference is kinda like a, a good Kentucky Derby, which I missed this year. We'll have it, it's been postponed, it'll be later in the year, but, you know, in good races, it's just by a nose. Sometimes it's a photo finish to, to see who, who wins the roses at Churchill Downs. And I, I think this was very much like that. When I did the numerical ranking of our ten original candidates, Autumn was just one tenth of a point out of the very top contention. We had, we had two others who, and here again, my personal ranking, that were tied for top place, but she was out by one tenth. I take a backseat to no one in my respect and admiration and gratitude for the work that Autumn Turner has done.
That's right.
She, she gets it. She knows that early childhood reading is, is that without which there is nothing. If you don't get that right, and you know by the end of the third grade whether you're getting it right, then nothing else really matters. The hope of recovery statistically is, is extremely small. I'm not saying it can't be done, but it's just, it rarely happens. So, Autumn understands it, she's worked on it. She and Dr. Bennett both have worked in the system, they know the system, they know the people. Knowing the people, in a lot of ways, is, is a great advantage. And I had one of Autumn's most ardent supporters, a person who works in a, in a support role for the school system, I think we got off the phone about 10:30 last night. And she, she was ardently devoted to, to Autumn because of Autumn's, I think, her personal accessibility and her readiness to, to try to work with everyone, regardless of what station they happen to occupy and whatever hierarchy I guess we have. So, and, and that was very moving for me. I, and, you know, and, and that's a person I highly respect, and I, and I appreciate that. Like I say, I appreciate all, all the input. The reason I voted for Mr. Swallows is because he has a proven record as, as a turnaround specialist. White County, White County High School was struggling, just as we have, with ACT. And given the chance to introduce some new ideas and to make some personnel changes, frankly, he, he led a huge turnaround in that. And I know we have been trying, and, and nobody would work harder or try harder than Bobby Cox and, and the people who work for him. But the fact is, we're still struggling, and that means we're still in the game. We use the word crisis quite often, that's, that's a Greek term that related to, to their view of medicine. The crisis point in the patient's progress was that time at which the patient either got much better or got much worse. We're at a crisis point. We cannot afford to lose any time. The, the lives and the futures of the children that we have in our trust, the sixty-three, sixty-four hundred students we have now, that is what I hold to be a sacred trust. If we don't do everything in our power to give them the best educational opportunities competitive with, with any other school district in Tennessee and the nation, then I think that we have, we failed in our mission. So, I'm, I'm kind of, I guess I'm kinda like that, was it Jerry Clower, the, the humorist that, that had that story about getting into a fight with a bobcat up in a tree, and he said, shoot up in the tree, somebody's gotta have some relief. And I'm, I'm, I'm at that point. You know, shoot up in the tree, we've gotta have some relief. That's why I'm voting for Grant Swallows. I said that our two local candidates know our local people, and that's all great, and I think that's important, but at the same time, I'm ready for somebody who can make some really tough decisions. And if we have some teachers who are, let's put it frankly, weak links in the chain, then that is a disservice to all of the other teachers, but mainly a disservice to our students. I'm looking for someone who, who can, who can come in with a clean slate, an objective, evidence-based approach, and make the changes that need to be made. I'm gonna consider it personally a failure on my part, as a Warren County School Board member, if we don't quickly see some real movement in student achievement. Here again, my heart goes out to Bobby and his staff and all the people who've worked their hearts out to, to move this thing. Nobody's been more dedicated to student success than, than Bobby Cox and, and his, his people and our teachers. But we've gotta have some relief. We cannot continue at this slow-moving crisis point. And I think we all wanna get better, that's why I'm voting for Grant Swallows.
Thank you, thank you. Those are wonderful comments. I, I just have one comment to make in regards to Grant Swallows. Something that really struck me, his ACT scores drastically increased, as Mr. Bill said. If I'm not mistaken from memory, within three to four years, they were eighteen point something, up to twenty point nine three, in a matter of three to four years. That was outstanding, and that, that just stood out to me.
The, the high school is our biggest school by default, you know, is, is we've got everybody else spread out, then they all funnel into that. But we have, you know, all the elementary schools. Did anybody get the feeling that Grant was, would be focused on high school and all of that, which is great, but, but didn't have the experience with elementary and middle schools?
Look, can I, can I just throw something in here?
Yeah.
For what it's worth, we asked Grant Swallows that question. And we asked him, you know, just put, put it to him, said, you know, we're, we're focused on ACT, but if this project, this noble lofty project doesn't work, don't blame the high school. The high school's doing everything they can, hopefully, presumably. Because ACT doesn't start when a student is a freshman in high school, it starts when that, that student is a kindergartner or in the first grade. And, and he, he, he understands that. So he knows that if we're not on, on target, on time, on grade level at the end of the third grade for reading proficiency, ACT is a forlorn hope, just forget about it.
Yeah. He did discuss team building strategies. With that, being an effective communicator, I think he can communicate his wishes. Apparently, he's done that with the increase of ACT scores. And his teachers, principals have followed through for him. So... And one other thing, and this really doesn't apply to anything being in the school system, but something that really struck me. He admires his parents and his wife, most of all, and I just got the feeling that he's such a family man, and during the interview, he teared up when he talked about his students and how much he loves his students. And that just stood out to me.
I, I have to say, I guess again, that talking to everybody, especially, I, I got all the principals, and I think I got most of the department heads, you know, which was kind of a neat thing to, to talk to all of those. And they were across the board, you know. A lot of them have respect for Courtney and, and thought that she would be a good candidate and be able to fulfill that role very well. A lot of people like Roger Alsop, you know, he was our first interviewer, you know, that's again, one of those things, after his interview, I saw, nobody can top him.
That's right, yeah.
But, but these two names that we're talking about did come up quite a bit. And for the most part, it was an either-or. I think you'll do, a lot of people said, you'll do good with anybody you pick, and I said, well, that's, you know, and I think we all agree with that. And, and we would do all right with either of the ones we, we have here. A good friend of mine gave me some advice about this, not which one to choose by the person, but to consider what the board is ready for. And I thought that was sage advice, to say, if the board is satisfied with where we're at and wants to continue down our path, which, you know, I think that path is good. A lot of people, even Grant himself, said, he looks at our school system and says, they're doing things right. So, if we're, if we're satisfied and we want to continue down that path, then we have a choice. If we have the stomach and we're ready to really get behind somebody to make some changes and to support that person whenever changes are made, then we have another choice. And, and that's kinda where it's coming down to. I, I think without exception, the six of us that are on the board, the five of us that are here and the one that's not, will stand behind the pick. And, and support that person as, as best we can, because we don't want to see anybody fail.
No.
You know, in, in national politics, I think a lot of people like to see the opposite party or somebody else fail, you know, just, but, but we, we want Warren County to, to be great in our education, we don't wanna have any kind of politics behind that. So, I guess that's the question, you know, it's, it's just to make sure that we're all geared up and, and ready to stand behind somebody. It's, it's a, it's a simple thing, but it stood out to me about Grant too, is, is the hashtag. People would write in to me, or they'd put on Facebook or something, and hashtag Team Swallows. And, and I couldn't help but think, man, if, if he can get people to rally behind him that way, that's, that's a pretty good deal, you know. And again, it's, it could go either way, and I think people are gonna be happy. I know the staff is gonna be happy, and they're gonna do the best they can, which, besides asking them what they thought about the candidates, you know, I have to say this, I said, well, what do you think about what's coming up in August, you know, how are we gonna be ready? And man, all the principals, they were like, yeah, we're gonna do it, you know, whatever happens, you know, if we have half the students, we're gonna do it, you know, if we have more than we had before, we're gonna do it. So, that resilience of, of our staff is, is pretty awesome. So, and, and I think they all said in the end, you know, whatever y'all choose, we're gonna get behind it, and we're gonna continue to do our job, so.
There's, there's one other thing, you know, you, you talked, Tanya, about culture, school culture, and what Grant Swallows said about school culture, and, and, you know, you've gotta get that culture right before you make all these big changes. And, and I, I think I mentioned in the interviews that Patricia, my wife, and I went to all of the district basketball games, tournament games, White County High School hosted those, and what a clean, a clean, neat, well-kept school building he had. The sportsmanship of the other team, the sportsmanship of the fans, the, the White County people, I, I thought was great. So, one of those nights, we had to go across the highway to McDonald's through the drive-thru and get Patricia her, her Diet Coke. And I thought, well, you know, get information wherever you can get it. And so I thought I would ask the young lady, looked like she might- And so I thought I would ask the young lady, looked like she might still be in high school or a very recent high school graduate, you know, who weighed dolls in the window. What do you think about Grant Swallows? He was your principal, right? Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir. Well, what do you think about him? Said, oh, he's an all-right guy. So, that doesn't sound like a ringing endorsement, but from a student saying the principal is an all-right guy, that says something. Because they know, they're in the position to know.
That's a large endorsement.
I had talked to Dr. Fox, is one of the people that I talked to, and we talked about Autumn. I asked her questions about Autumn. She said that she was a core director for the Upper Cumberland Reading Foundation. She said that a lot of the members that was on that team wanted to give up. She said Autumn wouldn't give up. She said she fought to get that reading program.
Right.
She said she was a leader, trustworthy, someone you could talk to. If anybody had an issue, she didn't down you, she found a way to get you through it. To me, that said a lot. And also, Dr. Mike Rutherford said, she's very dependable. She's a key leader. We're getting a grant project. She's a vice learner. She has skills, communication, she has some knowledge, and you would be very happy in having her as a director. Of course, they all marred Bobby, and they all know we're gonna have a hard time replacing him. We all know that, too. But, and then the teachers, I've talked to numerous teachers at the different schools, and they said that when Autumn came into the school, that she didn't act like she's better than them. She went in and she said, what can we do to make this better? What can we do to help? Not, you're gonna do this, we gotta have that done. It's what can we do? So she was including everybody, and I think that's what it's gonna take. I think it's gonna take somebody that can get to the community, that can work with the community, that the community respects and knows that they can talk to them, they'll listen, and they can figure out problems together. That's what, that's the way I feel.
Thank you, Sue. Does anyone have any more comments? Okay, we'll go to round two.
Okay, ballot round two. Helen Martin has voted for Grant Swallows.
Yes.
Sue Anderson has voted for Autumn Turner.
Yes.
Tanya Bess has voted for Grant Swallows.
Yes.
Bill Zegman has voted for Grant Swallows.
Yes.
Teddy Jones has voted for Grant Swallows.
That is correct.
If I understand it correctly, Madam Chairperson, that's four votes for Grant Swallows, one for Turner. Is that right?
That's correct.
That being the case, Madam Chairperson, I'm going to move that this Board of School Commissioners enter into negotiations with Grant Swallows in the direction of offering the Office of Director of Schools to him.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second on that. Any discussion, any more discussion?
I've said too much, but I want to say this about my fellow board members. I've served, as all of us have, in other situations, at other times, at other places. But I'm gonna say that I so much enjoy and appreciate these board members. There's not a single person here who comes with a private, personal covert agenda. Nobody has an ax to grind. Every member of this board has nothing but the best interest of our students and the teachers and those who serve those students. That's the only thing they're thinking about. And I just, I wish and pray that every local school district across Tennessee and across the nation were as blessed as Warren County is. Because I just want to say to you all, however this vote went this evening, we're friends, and I honor your hard work and your dedication and your honesty. Thank you, Madam Chairperson.
I just want to say, I agree with that, and a special thank you to Tanya that has, as chairman, has stepped up and done so much to help us through this process. And Robin, and Deena, and Bobby, to you, thank you so much. You're the only director I've known, but I'm gonna get to know another one, it looks like. So thank you so much for all that you have done.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. If I could, I feel, I don't know, I'm sad in a way. We should be happy, and there'll be a time for being glad and getting behind Grant if we can approve the contract and all. I got a lot of my mama in me. She's kind of the Eeyore of the family, always looking, whatever. You know, somebody can win the Super Bowl, and everybody be cheering, and she says, oh, I feel so bad for those that lost. And I do. I mean, my heart hurts for Courtney and Autumn, because we're friends. And, you know, we asked the question, what's gonna happen if you don't? You know, and they both, you know, said, this is their home, and they want to stick with us. But I know this has gotta hurt, you know.
Yes.
And Roger spent the time and developed a plan of transition. And I know he's a fine principal, but, you know, I hurt for them.
Yes.
But anyway, I had to share my emotions a little bit.
Thank you, Teddy.
And I associate myself with your feelings. Here again, it was a blessing to have four very competitive, highly qualified finalists. And I appreciate all of the time and energy and thought that they put into their participation. When they came here for interviews, they were prepared.
Yes.
They were prepared. Dr. Alsop even had a very nice written plan for the transition and what he wanted to do. They were prepared. For the two local candidates, Autumn and Courtney, you know, I wish nothing but the best, and I hope that they continue to work in every way possible to move our school system forward. They both, in their own separate roles, have made great contributions to our school system. But we just need onward and upward from here.
I'd just like to say thank you, Robin, Deena. Any question that I have had during this process, you've just been there. Johnny on the spot, you've just been immediate to help me. Thank you, fellow board members. Bobby, I guess we're classmates. I guess I can say you're the first retiree from the class of '86. So congratulations, we wish you well. With that being said, I think we need to vote.
On the motion.
On the motion.
My motion to make the offer to start negotiations with Grant Swallows.
Okay, motion?
I make a motion.
Okay.
I think we did.
We did, so we just need to vote on that. Okay, those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Grant Swallows will be offered the position of Warren County Director of Schools.
Yep, subject to negotiations.
Contract, yes, contract negotiation.
And Tanya, I'd like to thank everyone that reached out to me, and I had numerous people to reach out and tell me their thoughts, and I hope I represent them well. I think the way that we go, we'll all be behind the new director. So thank everyone. Bobby's, thank you. Bobby and Deena, thank you for everything you've done for us. It's been a pleasure.
Well said, Sue.
Yep. This process would not have worked as, I think, very professionally as it has if it hadn't been for Tanya, board members, but very much so for the preparation from Deena and Bobby and Robin, people who did that preparation. I want to thank Joe Harvey and his staff at W C S T V. Joe, wherever you are, up in the control room, I think it's wonderful to be able to bring these meetings to the public in their own homes or on their wireless devices, tablets, cellphones, whatever. I think that's great, and in this time of social distancing because of COVID-19, it's the only way we can do it.
Bill, yeah, and Brooke.
And Brooke.
Don't forget Brooke.
Yeah, Brooke, indispensable.
Before they play us off while we're giving all our thank yous, you're right. And I counted right before the meeting, those four videos of the interviews have been viewed a total of 2,662 times. So people were interested, and like I said before, it just, it proves one thing, that Bill, me, and you make good television.
Well, I'll tell you what, like they say, even the blind squirrel finds the acre and everything.
And on that note, do I have a motion that we adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second. Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you all.